Good thanks, how are you? Schnell.
Yeah.
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 Alright, everybody ready? Ladies and gentlemen, I think we're going to try to begin if everybody could find their seat. Thank you, welcome, welcome to this meeting tonight. We really do appreciate it when the public comes out and wants to partake in the process. We really do mean that. The reason we're having this meeting is simply for you to be a part of this. So, thank you, thank you for being here, thank you for taking time out of your evening. Just by way of introductions, really quick, my name is Wade Eaton, I'm one of the Kane County Commissioners. To my left is Patty Kubea, one of the Commissioners, and then Celeste Myers, one of the Commissioners. Obviously, as you know, these two Commissioners, I did start it, were just recently elected. And then on the end, we've got Rob Van Dyke, the Kane County Attorney. Want to lay out the structure of the meeting just a little bit. We, this meeting is literally, we have called it just to get more public input. This is not a required meeting. We've had a public hearing already during planning and zoning. Many of you, I recognize you were in planning and zoning last week, two weeks ago, I guess, 10 days ago now. We had a public meeting where the public was able to hear portions of this project, get a few questions answered, and then respond with some public comment. We've got a good, large group tonight, which is great. Sometimes when there's a small crowd, it's easier to have a little informal discussion and we can have a little more back and forth. This crowd might not let us do that, so forgive us for that. We probably ought to keep it fairly structured so that we can get out of here before midnight. We'll stay as long as you would like, but I know some of us probably aren't planning on staying all night. So, our thought is that we'll begin this meeting, I think the Commissioners, we might talk just a little bit and kind of frame up what we would like to discuss. We're going to have our County Attorney maybe talk just a little bit about the process. And then we would like to turn over the time, 10, 15 minutes, to the applicant of this project to answer as many, or share as much of the info, present the project, and hopefully answer as many of the anticipated questions as they can. And then we'd like to turn the time over to you. Please stand up and share comments, questions, whatever you would like. With this big of a crowd, let's keep our comments and questions to two minutes. We will keep track of your questions, we're not going to answer them immediately. And then when everyone has had the chance to ask their questions and comments, we'll come back to as many of those questions as we can at the end and answer those. Our goal here is just to share and spread and give as much information as we possibly can. But we're going to have to be a little orderly in that as well. We would appreciate it if everyone would be respectful of others' comments. We're not going to agree, all of us, and please be respectful of others. We would, we'd ask you to not boo, or clap, or jeer anyone else that is willing to get up to the mic and make a comment. We appreciate you being respectful. A couple of things I would love to hear, again, the reason why we're here is to listen to you. A couple of the things I would love to hear is, what are your specific concerns with regard to the project? I would love to hear your thoughts about, the area's already been rezoned R1. And so, it's an administrative item that a subdivision could potentially go in. I would love to hear your thoughts, which of these options, and you actually see some maps in the back to illustrate this point, which of the options do you prefer and why? If you don't prefer any options, please describe that as well as you can in detail and share that with us. Any other thoughts, Commissioners, anything you'd like to hear?
Hi, I mainly just want to hear from everyone in a different format. I know you all had, most of you were at the public hearing at county planning. And what I want to avoid is just a frustrating experience of having the exact same format as before. So, my vision for this meeting is that it'll be a little bit more informational, Q and A, town hall type, not quite so much pent-up frustration. So, thank you for being here and this is wonderful to have you all here. Thank you.
Just like to say thank you for being here. I appreciate all the phone calls, the emails, the texts that I've received. If I haven't responded, at least acknowledging, I apologize, there's been a lot of them. But just know that I have read everyone, and I will read everything I do receive, and I appreciate all the research, all your concerns. It does help me, especially being new at this. I don't have to go and do a lot of the research when you quote the quote, or you know, you give your opinion on something. I do appreciate it. It does make my job easier in gathering information so I can make a decision, informed decision.
One other thing I would like to add is, this isn't going to be the last meeting on this, folks. There's a lot of work to be done on this project and there's going to be there's going to be ample time for public comment, additional public comment. We are not making a decision tonight. We are literally here just to listen to you. So, there will be additional meetings, additional chance to comment, and I appreciate Commissioner Kubea, please, call us, email us, text us. There are, we try to be very available to you. And this is not your, you only, you don't only get two minutes. We're available to you in other forms and other ways that you can communicate with us, and we would please encourage you to. Now, maybe we'll turn just a second over to Rob. Rob, if you could kind of explain the process and maybe where we are in the process.
Thank you. Thanks for attending tonight. Again, my name is Rob Van Dyke. And I'm just going to give a very brief overview of where we are at in the process and where it may go from here. So, Canab 600 LLC previously submitted a application for a zone change to change the property that's the subject of today's project to R2 zoning. That went through the Planning Commission, went to the County Commission, was approved. And the property currently is zoned R2, R1, excuse me, thank you, R1. And subsequent to that approval to the R1 zoning, the entity submitted an application, which is now, the name of the application is the Willow Reserve Estates Planned Unit Development Application. So, they submitted that application. The Planned Unit Development Application is a step that's in addition to the normal subdivision process. So, anytime a developer wants to subdivide any land, they have to go through the formal subdivision process that in essence is they, they submit all their plans for a preliminary plat that goes through both the Planning Commission and the County Commission for approval. And then they finalize those plans with a final plat that goes through both the Planning Commission and the County Commission before the final plat is approved. And then that final plat can be recorded and the developer can then start their project, doing the infrastructure and improvements and whatnot. That's the normal subdivision process. That has not even begun yet. We're at this additional stage of the project where they're asking for approval for a PUD, which has to occur before they can even start their application for subdivision. The Planned Unit Development, the PUD process, the new process that the county has is a legislative process that gives a lot more discretion to the County Commission as opposed to the way it used to be where it, they had a lot less ability to control the process and create additional benefits for the communities surrounding the area. But with the PUD application, it's mostly involving the requirement for 20% of open space that then allows the developer to cluster the density. It's not an increase in density, it's just a clustering of the density that's allowed under R1. And then they can apply for mixed uses, so commercial uses, multi-residential uses. And without the PUD approval, they could still move forward with a traditional subdivision under the R1 zoning. With the PUD approval, it allows them to have the additional limited commercial uses, the additional limited multi-residential uses, and the clustering of the densities as opposed to a more uniform density across the property. So, that's the stage we're at. The Planning Commission has, on multiple meetings and after multiple hearings, reviewed the PUD application, and they made a recommendation to approve it with a couple of conditions. The main conditions were that they adjust the location of the commercial property to line up with the other commercial and manufacturing zones that are located near, across Highway 89 on this project. They also made the recommendation that the multi-residential portion of the project be removed from the outside of the property to the interior. So, those recommendations are now before the County Commission, and they can move forward to accept the project, reject the project as far as the PUD portion is concerned, make modifications and approve the project, continue to work with the developer to make changes. So, that's the stage that we're at. But again, it's just the Planned Unit Development stage of the project. If and/or when the PUD portion of the application is approved, that then would allow the developer to move forward with the full subdivision process, which addresses, you know, other concerns and ensures that we have more detailed plans about infrastructure and other portions of the project.
Thank you, Rob. Now, let's give the applicant some time, and I'm not even entirely sure who's here. Greg, maybe stand up and introduce yourselves and however you guys want to do this. Let's try to keep it in a 10, 12-minute window, and then we'll, we'll open it up to the group. I would again encourage you, the tarring and feathering is next week. Let's be respectful to the applicant and the ideas that they're having. So, let's keep the communication. Greg can share his ideas with us. And then when you've got questions, I just don't want to get into a lot of back and forth between the audience members and the applicant. Let's keep that with the, with the Commission up front. Greg, please. We do, and we decided for sake of time, we're going to forego that this time. Thank you.
I don't mind. You guys don't mind, I don't mind.
Ah, go ahead, thank you.
I mean, I don't mind doing those things, is what I'm saying. Not a problem with me. I almost would rather face this way, that's the problem. Can I face?
If you want to spin that around. I thought the same thing. Why don't you, why don't you spin that around and turn your mic so it works?
Alright. You hear me okay? Okay, great. Alright, my, my two minutes starts right now? Is that how this works? My name's Greg Whitehead. I work with a company called Philo Development Group. It's a, it's a part of Philo Ventures. So, we do different real estate developments around the state. I live in St. George full-time. We also start businesses from, from scratch. So, we help people start businesses and do startups. It's, it's very enjoyable business. I really, really love my job. It's a great job. Like I said, I was born and raised in St. George. I've got my wife and four children aged four to 14, two boys and two girls. And I think it's the perfect mix. If I, if I had to choose, I would do it exactly the same again. So, I'm a normal human being, is my point. Okay? So, I, we came into this, so, this parcel of land, it was a big parcel, 600 acres, and it came on the market for sale, and so, we looked at, we looked at buying the land. 600 acres was probably more than we had originally wanted or thought. However, we knew, my partner, his wife is from Canab. We have, you know, roots here and we love the southwest. And we also had spoken to several of the businesses in this area, in Canab and in Kane County, and they had expressed to us that there's a housing problem and that they were having a difficult time bringing employees into work because they just couldn't have, find housing. I was speaking with an acquaintance in St. George that had just moved from Canab, and she specifically moved from there to work in St. George only because she was living out of her truck. She never could find a place here to work. So, she had a job here, but she just couldn't find a place to live. So, putting all of that together, we, you know, we got together as a group and we said, "Why don't we try to do, you know, something in this area?" So, admittedly, this is larger than we had expected with 600 acres. And so, the option was, okay, we, we have to buy it in 600 acres, that's the only way that this is presented to us. So, do we make the, we develop small parcels, you know, 20 times? Or, you know, slowly develop it out in chunks? Or do we come in with a large master plan that will take a long time, but at least it's master planned for the future and maybe we can incorporate some fun things, like trail systems and equestrian and things of that nature? And so, while looking at the big picture is more intimidating and scary and it's, you know, it's a long, 20 years and it's 600 acres, it's, it's, there's a lot, it's a lot more difficult sometimes to see and to understand. But we felt like, at the end of the day, using the PUD process to incorporate some of the fun things into housing, into housing developments, we wanted sincerely to create a community. We want this to be a place where families live, families play, families are at. And so, our desire was, okay, maybe it's the harder route to go with the PUD. The R1 is easier. It's financially, probably easier and financially better to just do R1 lots, sincerely. But we felt like the Planned Unit Development with the trails and the open space was better overall for the community, and we felt like that would build a better community for this area. So, that was, that is, is my and our genuine feeling for this parcel of land. So, so that's kind of what started this. The area needs housing, and we, was the best route. So, you'll notice on the, on the, on the plan, there's, it almost looks like lots of little neighborhoods. Those are essentially phases. So, this gets built out in ultimately 15 phases. Phases are, some are bigger, some are smaller, so they, they take longer, some take longer or shorter to build out. But overall, like, like I've said many times, I think this is probably about a 20-year project. It's going to slowly grow, and it's only going to grow as fast as there is demand. And frankly, I think that people want to be here. I think that the people in this room have made this community a great place to live. And so, other people will want to be around that. And I think the children of the people in this room will want to be here. It was always a running joke where, I'm at in St. George, you, you live in St. George, you move away to work because you can't afford to stay in St. George, and then when you finally make enough money, you can finally move back to St. George. And you know what? That's wrong. Of my all, I had five brothers and, you know, I have, I have a family of five, four other siblings, and three of them moved, two of us stayed, and I feel like the lucky one. I got to stay. I didn't have to move away to a city, a big city, to try and make a living. And so, that's a blessing to me. I, I want to have an affordable community in this area where your children can live and grow up and have, and have a great life. That's my genuine sincere for this area. So, I'm going to go over very quickly just some of the questions I've read. You know, I, I, I'm not naive, so, you know, I see Facebook, I see all these things. I'd actually personally don't like social media, so I don't use it very often. But I would love, I love to know the concerns of people and hopefully we can address some of those concerns, and that's the point of this evening. I will say a handful of people have reached out to me saying they do like the idea, they like the plan, they like the community, the equestrian, all of, all of those things. We'll see if, if there's some here tonight, but otherwise, I think the point here is to address concerns of the people in this room. So, we talked, we've talked about water. Water's a big issue, water's a big issue everywhere. We live in the desert. And so, number one, number one thing, when we're even looking at buying the land, is we, we go and say, is there enough water to have growth? And so, first place we talked to is the Kane County Water Conservancy District. They, they are the water authorities of this area. And they assured us that there is enough water for this type of growth. As a matter of fact, the way it works is, if it even gets close to not have enough, they will not issue what's called a will serve, which means if you want to do a development in this area, we will serve you or we will not serve you water. So, if Kane County Water Conservancy District doesn't have the water, they will not give you a will serve letter, which means you must bring your own water. So, that would mean I'd have to go and secure my own water rights of, of someone that has water rights in this area. I'd have to dig my own wells, and I wouldn't be a part of the water system that's here. In this case, that is not the case. Kane County has the water and has issued us with a set of parameters that we have to do, such as bringing in extra water lines and, and putting in a redundant circulation system for the water that they, they can and do have plenty of water for this development. The same thing is for power. Power, they've, they've seen the power needs that we've sent the power company, in this case, Garkane, we've said this is what we anticipate the power needs will be. Our engineers have looked at that. Garkane has came back and said, absolutely, we've got the power to supply you. You know, we, we have costs. There's obviously costs to bring that infrastructure in, and we burden that, those costs for water and power and sewer, which we'll, we'll talk about. So, but there's plenty of power. We have will serve letters from Garkane. Sewer, sewer's an interesting one. So, most of, most of the homes in this area are currently on septic, septic systems. We plan to do what's, what's called a regionalized treatment system. We haven't landed on the specific one. Some of, some of them, they're sometimes called a large underground water. Sometimes they're just a, a smaller, small building that will treat it, treat the water. Regardless of the one we end on, the, the outcome is ultimately the same. We want the people in the community to be able to not necessarily have to have septic in their yard. And, and so, we, ultimately, all the homes in this area will be treated like they're on a sewer system, and it'll be a community effort as opposed to an individual effort. And the nice thing about doing that is, at the end of the day, it saves water because we can treat the water and even reuse it for landscaping and irrigation and things of that nature. Fire, fire's a big issue. Obviously, fire's a big issue. So, we're working with Canab City, Kane County, to create some type of what's called a special service district. We've also got plans to include a warehouse facility to house a truck in case they want to have a truck on site for the area. So, the fire safety will hopefully cover everybody that's living in this general area, which my understanding is, once there is fire protection and a better services district in this area, theoretically, everybody's insurance could go down. So, because there's, now everybody has more coverage for their own housing insurance and the like. We've adopted the Canab City Dark Sky Ordinance, which I believe is a step forward. It's It's, it, it's, it's an ordinance that essentially covers the types of lights and the angles of lights, keeps everything directed downward to preserve dark sky. And that is our intent and our goal. And, you know, I'm, I'm personally very glad we, we put this in to the, to the development agreement. So I think it'd be good for everybody. So I, personally, I would encourage all, all the new developments to go, any, any new development going forward should just voluntarily say, we will adopt those ordinances for their Alrighty. So there's been some, some talk about border setbacks. Any, any of our lots that happen to border existing developments, we've increased the setbacks. So frankly, I'm, I'm okay with, we, all of our borders, minimum one acre, most of the border lots actually are four, five, six, seven acres. So that, along the Palomar border, those are four, five, six, seven acre lots. Along the Crimson side is minimum one acre lots. And naturally, people want more backyard than front yard. So no issues. We've increased our setbacks so that people don't build on their borders. Frankly, I think that would happen naturally anyways. Having said that, I was out at the lot, or out at the property today, and there's a new house, a Crimson, that has auxiliary dwelling that is probably at the setback or close to it. So I thought, okay, no worries. We will, we will force that and there will be a lot more setbacks because frankly, I think that's the right thing to do. The other thing about our properties is we don't, we are not allowing auxiliary dwellings outside of some equestrian type buildings for the animals. And so if you're, for example, if you're bordering Crimson, those one acre lots, it's one structure. There's only one structure is allowed. So it's not like you're going to have multiple houses that one's in the back and one's in the front. Alrighty. So there's a lot of, a lot of conversation, especially prior to us coming forward, it was in regards to affordable housing. Let, I'm, I want to be really clear on, on this next area. So in Washington County, I'm the chairman of the Housing Authority for Section Eight Housing. The federal government has a very strict definition of what they call affordable housing. So, so sometimes when you're, you know, the lawyer, the lawyer says, well, you can't call something affordable housing if it's, if you're trying to define it as affordable housing. Most of us that aren't lawyers just say, affordable housing is housing you can afford, right? That's generally the, the, the definition. The technical definition is not paying more than 30% of your income for housing. That would be the, the technical definition. So we are not, we are not necessarily bringing in federal affordable housing to this area. What we are doing through the PUD process, which has some, without the PUD process, every lot is roughly one acre. And so with the PUD process, some are larger, some are smaller. And so when you start with a, with a smaller lot, especially something like a town home, it becomes more affordable. If everything is one acre or close to one acre, everything is roughly the same. Yes, we're adding more supply, which theoretically could bring the prices down in a supply-demand scenario. But what we're doing is, if you want to spend more money on a bigger lot, that's your prerogative. If you want to have, buy a smaller lot that's maybe more affordable for you, it, it will be less. The, the half acre lots will be cheaper than a one acre lot. And a town home will be less than a half acre lot. So by adding the mix in, you are going to have more affordable options for everybody that lives in this area. So yes, we're talking about hopefully having more affordable units for anybody that wants to live in this area, but we're not necessarily talking about the definition of affordable housing from the federal government. Hopefully that makes sense. And if it doesn't, ask the question. We'll, we'll get to the bottom of it. The multifamily that we are proposing is town homes. It is not apartments. It is not even like the multifamily, when I drive into town, those are called the Wave? I think they're called, the loft? Yeah, the loft, yep. Okay. Thanks. The loft, so the loft looks like there's, those are three-story, external doors, external stairs. Does that sound right? Anyone familiar with the loft? We are not doing those. We are doing town homes with garages and two-story homes. They look like, you know, they look like houses for the most part. They, they will be homes that are touching, no doubt. That's, that's kind of the definition. But for all intents and purposes, they will be like large single-family homes that have multiple people. So I think they're very tasteful, especially given that we do need affordable housing. We need it. I mean, it, it, it is a need everywhere. Commercial, neighborhood commercial is out there. It's definitely a faraway phase. It is mainly used, I'm, I'm a big believer in neighborhood commercial. I think it, it actually is needed. I'll tell you a travesty of some St. George planning, since that's where I, I live. There, if you've, if you've been to that area, if you've ever been to Little Valley, it is a sea of homes. It is all homes and there's no neighborhood commercial. You have to drive forever to get milk. You have to drive, it's, it's not, it's not good planning, frankly. They should have, they should have broken it up and put in some commercial. And it would have been, it would be a better place. It's, it causes too much traffic when everybody has to drive far, you know, if you have to drive an extra 10 minutes to get to a commercial place, that's, you could have driven two, that's eight more minutes of driving that, round trip that you didn't need to do. I'm a believer in neighborhood commercial. However, in this scenario, it is, it is down the road. And the truth is, if it's never called for, meaning there's nobody that wants to put their dance studio or daycare or other neighborhood commercial type activities, if nobody wants that, we will not build that. It, it is purely based off of the demand of the people who live in the area. So the people who typically go into these places are daycares and dance studios and occasionally you'll get like a Domino's or some food. Sometimes gas stations. I don't know if a gas station will come here. The only way a gas station would go right there is if people wanted a gas station to go there. Because if they don't use it, it goes out of business and nobody wants to go out of business. So if, if, if commercial doesn't make sense, if there's no demand for commercial, we will not build commercial. I mean, that is as easy as it is. Let's see. Part of the PUD process is, so once it gets approved, that's what's considered entitled. The lots are entitled, meaning we could build them as they need to be. There's also a development agreement between the developers and the governing body, in this case, the county. That is a, that is a two-way agreement. So we say we'll do something, but also the county says, if you said you were going to do it, it has to be done this way. Can't just arbitrarily change it and you can't, some, so if, if we were, if I were to go bankrupt and not be able to finish, or if we sold it, or do something of that nature, the next group has to obey to the letter of the law, the same development that was already put in place. So unless it gets modified and they have to come in and go through the same process that we're doing now. So what that means is, there's not really a fear that it's just going to be a, we come in, sell it, do all this stuff, someone comes in and does some, something totally, all multifamily, right? No one's going to come in and put apartment buildings. Once the development is, is, PUD's done and it's, and it's approved, it is town homes, not apartments. You don't get to just arbitrarily change that. And let's see. I also, I called the Kane County Treasury, just, I was curious. Property taxes, right now, non-exempt homes, meaning non-primary homes pay 1% of their value in property taxes. If you're exempt, you pay 55% of that, so 0.55%. And, you know, if we were to take today's values, but this project was done, this project would be bringing in a little over $1.5 million a year in property taxes. Those property taxes go to schools, roads, law enforcement. On top of that, special service districts like fire and maintaining the sewer systems, all of those things are covered in your property taxes. So it's a lot of money. As of right now, if you exclude special services districts, I think they told me that the, the total revenue for the county is somewhere around the 6 million mark, you know? So this will help, this will help with providing a lot of the services that will, that will be needed, no doubt. So I think that growth is inevitable, as much as some people don't want growth. The question is, can we do it tastefully and together? And I, I guess that's a bit of a matter of opinion. I will say, I don't want an R1 development. That is not what I want. I, I would much rather have something that will build a community and I believe what, what we have will build a community. About half of our space is dedicated to some type of equestrian oversized lots that is, 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 I think, part of this community. So anyway, I'd be happy to take the questions as you have them. Thanks.
Thank you, Greg. Good information and hopefully I'd answered a lot of questions. If it didn't, again, feel free to ask them. Big group, we want to hear from all of you. Please be respectful of everyone else sitting in the room. Let's try to limit this to two minutes. Let's actually do limit it to two minutes. I don't want to cut you off. We want to hear what you have to say, but let's try to limit it to two minutes. And again, ask your questions, make your comments, and then we'll tally the questions and try to answer as many of them at the end as we can. So if anyone would like, come up to the mic, form a line and let's get started. If you could just move that podium out of the way and flip that microphone around, it'd be perfect. Yep.
No podium.
Yeah, just move it out of the way if you would. Whichever way you want.
Cameras.
Anybody want?
So I'm going to try to cut this to two minutes, but you know I'm a lengthy speaker. No. So a lot of people here know me. I'm Chanel Healy. I'm a Realtor in Canab. And I am not affiliated whatsoever with the developer of this or any developers in, in Kane County per that matter. But I do think that it's interesting that a lot of people don't understand the need for housing in our area. And I feel like that's something that probably needs to be addressed from a Realtor's standpoint. I have a lot of people who are clients that have friends, they have family, they have grandchildren, they have parents that want to either retire, they want to come back to Canab. And most people sitting here, they're not, they don't check the market regularly. But I did last night. I thought, you know, I'm just going to look at this. And I thought that people need to know this. So right now, in our market, we have 19 homes on the market or single-family dwellings. And of those, three of them are between $700,000 and $1 million apiece. So five of those are town homes. And yes, there are a certain amount of people that like to live in a town home, but if your, if your parents want to retire here, they don't want to climb those stairs. And so of that, you've got six of those homes that are really in need, really in need of repairs. Is that a good first-time homebuyer home? I guess it could be, but would you want to move into that? Something you got to move into and repair while you're raising a family? So of that, then we are left over with five of those homes, or six of them, I can't remember which, that are over $400,000. Now, most people here don't seem to understand what it takes to buy a $400,000 house. But that's going to require that people at a 5.5% mortgage rate can have an income of $75,000 plus. That's hard. That's hard. In Kane County, we know that's hard, right? You want your kids not to leave and you want your grandkids to stay here and you want to have your friends come here and live, just like you came here and live. But we have a housing shortage and it needs to be addressed. To always say no to all development is difficult. If you make $75,000 and you only have another payment of equal to or less than $340 a month, you can afford to buy a $400,000 home.
Thank you.
The homes here are that expensive.
Thank you so much. It's great. Who's next? Feel free to come up, form a line, whatever you'd like to do. Please state your name as well at the beginning, if you would.
I'm Rick Kessel. I think that frankly, you've already done the damage. The damage is you approved the property for R1. And I think that nobody wants that kind of a development. So I think this is a done deal. So I think we're stuck with the PUD. And frankly, that's probably a better choice. So as long as there are serious things that the developer will agree to, like some of the things that he mentioned, in addition, you know, making sure that Mountain View can take the construction trucks, making sure that right away, there's a, a road that goes from 89 right to there, so they don't have to be traveling on Mountain View, et cetera. Also, the town homes, which I, I like that idea. They are very, they can be very pretty and that, and that's not necessarily a bad thing. We have to make sure that they're not turned into vacation ownership homes. Because we have a problem with vacation ownership homes and that's part of the reason that people can't live here. So, and, and I appreciate the dark sky, the respect for the dark sky. So I think this is a done deal. I do think that your constituents have long memories, so I think you'll be dealing with this in a year or two. But I think if, if it can be tastefully done with certain modifications, then I think it's the best we can do. And, you know, it is what it is.
Thank you, Rick.
You all know me. I'm Matt Fisher. I live...
Matt, I've changed my mind. Sorry. If you guys wouldn't, if you wouldn't mind facing us like Rick did, that'd be wonderful. Well...
Right here.
Yeah, one right here.
That's good. So I have 10 minutes' worth of comments that I would like to make on this. You've heard some of them before. However, I think that this does not fit with the PUD ordinance. I think that the PID is a way to alleviate any financial responsibility for it. I don't know how anyone can find that attractive. They are maximizing 100% of the property for profit. There's no other reason. They don't need to build it out this much, actually. It's a choice that they're making to get every penny out of the soil. I think you are doing a disservice to your citizens who elected you by only allowing two minutes' worth of comment at all your meetings. And I think this subject is way too complicated for a two-minute conversation. I have a long memory as well, too.
Thank you, Matt. I was going to say, I'm not sure we're going to be able to track that very well. Matt has actually done a great job of sending emails to us and, and being a part of it. And again, this isn't the only time we're going to get, folks. We're, we're going to be listening to you for, for a while. The only dilemma is, we set a precedence and, and I'm trying to be respectful of all of you. It's not that we don't want to listen to Matt, because we most certainly do. Bonnie, please. Thank you.
My name's Bunny Bundrick. Today's my birthday. Woo! Thank you, yes. And I have lived here, I did the math. I can do math. She left, but I can do math, like mortgages and stuff, too. But I've lived here over a third of my life and I love it. And I think... of my life, and I love it, and I think that, I have some questions, but I think this is a disservice to, the way it is now, to the people who live here, and I speak for a lot of the people who live out that way, because I've talked to a lot of them, but, I speak for myself, but, my questions, I want to know more about the sewer. Is there going to be a sewer pond? Is it underneath? Am I going to see it? Am I going to smell it? Uh, is it gonna, if something goes wrong, is it going to go into my well that was made in the thirties? It was dug by the CCC, it's on Lost Spring, we have water rights in there? That's what I want to know, because I don't want any of that. I don't even want to think about that. And, the other thing is, the affordable housing, the Section Eight, I understand that also, and I'm just wondering if, if they would think about that? If you're going to bring houses, and we're going to have to deal with all of that, would you consider bringing some Section Eight? Because that's the real affordable housing. Or, do they not want that kind of housing there? Because, if we're talking about service industry, which we are, because it's King County, then we need some real affordable housing, because the people that do these types of jobs that we need don't make that much. Um, also, I don't, I guess I just don't understand the equestrian, because maybe I'm confused, and maybe you are going to make some changes, but my understanding is, you can still only have one large animal if you have an acre? Is that right? Or, that you can answer later, but I thought it was right, that you can only have one large animal, so I don't know what all this equestrian stuff is. If you want to ride your horse, just take it out on the BLM, which is right behind you, but, some people like that kind of thing, I guess. I don't, I'm opposed to all, I don't want this many people, I don't want, I don't like what it looks like, that's not the kind of people that live out there now, and there may be some that want to live like that, but that's not what we want, and I don't know anybody that moved to King County, not Canab, but King County, and said, "You know what? I think I'll move to King County, because there's a lot of high-paying jobs, and I'm going to get one of them, and, um, by the way, I'd like some, a whole bunch of townhomes, let's just get a whole bunch of townhomes." Because I don't know anybody that said that. I really don't, and I think it's, you know, I've been fighting this stuff, and I don't want to be, I don't want to say fight, but, my God, I've been fighting this since, I don't even remember, I've been here nineteen years, and it was shortly after when the subdivision was built, and it was all illegal, and we've just, it's just gone down for here.
We're two minutes, Bunny.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, I'm Britt. Um, I, so, just a couple, I, I, I agree, I think that this is a done deal, so just some things moving forward, I guess. Um, I appreciate the adoption of the dark sky ordinance, but the wording of adopted, um, is not, like, is that in their HOA? I think that would be a really important thing, that, that's a requirement, um, but I don't know if that's a, you know, that's your land use issues or your rights, I, I don't know, but I do think that should be a requirement, because there currently is not a dark sky ordinance in the county, and so I don't know how you're going to, um, make that happen. Um, additionally, so I do think that's really important. Um, additionally, I do think that there, we haven't addressed the vacation rental issue here, and I do think that housing is a shortage, because the, our local government peoples haven't addressed it properly, and, uh, there, how are you going to, like, you can't put a Band-Aid over something after it's already happened. You're making all these amazing homes, and townhomes, and affordable, that's wonderful, and California comes in and says, "Great, I'm going to snatch up all these townhomes, and I'm going to rent them out." That's why we don't have any place for people to live, and hopefully the, you know, the home prices do come down to a reasonable level for people to afford things, um, but that's just a problem here, and we need to take care of our people who live and who work here, and who, we are, we're running on tourism, and so, who is going to work in these places? Not people who are coming to stay with us. And I'm a tourist, I own a tourism business, and I, I very much appreciate tourism, and we need people to live here and work here to have a thriving, um, community. Um, I think that, those are, those are my thoughts. Thank you so much for considering those things. Thanks.
Yeah, Martin Marather, and this affordable housing thing, being on a fixed income, being a disabled veteran, I can't afford affordable housing. I can't. I'm living in a fifth wheel. I want my grandkids over. I'd like to have my grandkids play in the yard, play with the chickens, you know, I can't afford, even affordable housing, I can't afford. So, I'm against this. And saying that I have to live in a townhouse and climb stairs, no, it ain't right.
Thank you.
Oh, commissioners, audience, lawyer. Um, hence when is R, R-one a big checkerboard? It's not. Look at the ranchos, that's zoned R-one. That's a nice winding street development, terms of estates. That, I think is zoned R-two or a little larger, that's not a big checkerboard. You need to get rid of the PUD in your code enforcement, in your land use ordinances, and stick with your regular residential lot sizes. And R-one is, as Canab City has been trying to reinforce, right-to-farm. You want to put a half-an-acre on those. How can you have right-to-farm on a half-an-acre with a lot that takes up most of that? You're going to have enforcement problems.
Thanks.
Hi, I'm Tom Carter, I live in Vavillion Cliffs, and I have lived out there for twenty-eight years now, and I think the issue is infrastructure, number one, because if the developer doesn't come up with some definite substantial plans, you'd affray the cost to the taxpayers of the infrastructure. At the last meeting of the Land Committee, it was proposed that they hook into my water system, using my tank and my pipes. Yeah, there's plenty of water, Mike Noel says, but he didn't talk about what it takes to get water to you and to safeguard it. I think their plans are too vague. And, you know that Mountain View Road? I'm a cyclist. I use that road to cycle into town when I go to the gym, and I cycle back. Why don't they pay for a bike path after they enlarge that road, so it can take the number of people that will be using it? And it might be a, a very large road. And as far as commercial, that's taking away from town, Canab City, if they put commercial out there as a gas station, or a dance studio, whatever. I don't think it suits the nature of what exists in Canab now. There's nothing like it in town. There's nothing as built up as this proposal is, and I don't think it flies, I think it's more of a scenario without any concrete underpinnings. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think now would be a, a good time for another story. We heard yours, and I appreciate everything you're doing. You talked everything about all of the money. That's what brought you here. And, if you really didn't want these type of meetings, all you had to do was say, "Okay, I came here, I read the general plan, and there are one-acre lots, and that's what we'll build." You wouldn't have all these people concerned about this, but you want to change the landscape. And you come up here and you mix up your, your dish of Kool-Aid, and you tell everybody how it's going to make you feel good, "Just drink a little of my Kool-Aid. Yeah, it's going to take twenty years, but we got the time." Well, the bottom line is, a lot of people think that this job was already done and confirmed before we had these meetings, but I think they mixed one thing up. When they were planning on it, the other commissioners, they didn't plan on the election. And, but they didn't worry about, they either didn't plan on it, or they didn't worry about the election, because they were just running against some women. Well, you ladies showed them, and we're glad you're there. But the bottom line is, you're there because we believed what you told us, that you understand what our needs are, and that you would stand up for them, and that's what we're hoping for. Because what we have out there, everybody knows the land is going to be, it, it's going to be used, it's going to be set up, but it will happen as, as every other country, every other city has. It happens by attrition, and, and not, you don't dump something in on them and make everybody like it. That's wrong. They were given recommendations early on. I sat on the last, I sat in the last meeting, and the board was wondering why they should give more recommendations, because they didn't do anything with the first ones. Well, let's go back in history and take care of the first recommendations. Figure out what, what you're doing wrong, and come in and, and correct it. Go back to the general plan, everybody's, everybody out here is the developer that bought a house and bought a lot and built the house on it. They developed that land. But they, they have every, every right as any other developer that comes in here.
Thank you.
I'm not done.
We're over time, though.
No, 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 no. If, if he can get twenty-five minutes, I can at least give the five.
Well, he's answering questions for everybody.
He didn't have a question.
And if I don't...
He didn't have a question.
If I allow you to go on, I've got to allow everybody else.
But anyway...
I need you to wrap up very quickly.
Very good, thank you very much.
Thank you for your input, good input.
Hope you enjoyed the Kool-Aid.
All right. I'm Dave Jones, you guys know who I am, I've been around. I came out here, I bought a piece of rural land, I bought six-plus acres on Palmar Lane. At the time, when I first came out here, they were going to, best I could do was ten acres, and just before I left, we found, opened up Palmar Lane, I was able to get six-and-a-quarter acres. Now, there's twenty-eight lots down there, there's fourteen of us that are going to have this development in our backyard. Now, the lots on the side, they look pretty good, but the rest of it, okay, let's get down to their plan. Their plan would fit Phoenix, or Salt Lake, or Saint, or Las Vegas, doesn't fit this town. I mean, not even on the edge of the town. Yeah, I'd like to see some smaller lots, some more economical lots in town, near town, but not out there. We don't need the townhomes, we don't need the vacation rentals, and I'm glad to see that, uh, commercial may not happen. Uh, you know, the one thing I have to ask, those townhomes, are they going to fit under HOA? Who's going to control the upkeep of those townhomes? Are they going to be owned by one person? Or are they going to be, uh, owned by four different people? How's that going to work? Now, the other thing, when I came out here, was a rural development. Everything was supposed to be maintained rural. There's words in the county documents that say, "A rural development." This isn't a rural development, this is a city development. Nothing more. Enough.
Thank you.
I'm Gwen Brown. First of all, it makes me kind of sad that these people are just saying they think it's a done deal. Don't give up, guys. Don't say it's a done deal. Keep fighting, because hopefully we have a new set of commissioners who will actually listen to the people who elected them. That is not a place for PUD out there. It is rural, people moved out there, they spent a lot of money to live a rural lifestyle, and you want to bring in townhomes and, and what, another thing about he, the phases, they, when they brought it, first brought the PUD plan, they totally ignored a lot of the PUD laws. They, it's supposed to be done in four phases, they say they're going to do it in fifteen phases, and they can do those phases in any order that they want. Well, I'm assuming they're going to do the townhomes first, because that's where they're going to make some money real fast, and like a lot of people are asking about vacation rentals, they have planned, like eighty-three or ninety-three, I don't remember, vacation rentals in this PUD. They haven't brought that up, but that is in the plan. So, there will be a lot of vacation rentals out there, and, um, the thing about, they've got a thing in there that says you can have fourteen household pets. I'm, I'm assuming they're talking about the horses, but that's not really a household pet, so that means if you, they can have fourteen horses, you can have fourteen dogs. Do we want that? It's just, the PUD is a way to get around the rules. The half-acre lots, the town multi-residential, it's just not the right place. We may need housing, but we need to have areas that are made for multi-residential, areas that are smaller lots, right between two other subdivisions that are larger lots, it's not the place to put this. It's just not right. I really hope that you guys will just listen to the people, that I've had so many people come to me, and you're talking about the respect, I had, after our planning and zoning meeting, I had people come to me that the developer was up talking to the lawyer while other people were trying to talk, that's not respect. Um, Andy Gatt, which is involved in this, was up talking to Wade during, when everybody else was trying to talk, that's not respect. We wouldn't do that. Why are they allowed to do that? No one said a thing. I think we need to just follow the county plan, keep it rural, and do what it's supposed to be. We're, we don't, we don't need a city out there. Thank you.
Thanks, Gwen. I sure appreciate Gwen. Gwen serves on our county planning and zoning board, and God bless her, she takes darts and rocks every day for all of us, so, thank you.
Hi, good evening, my name is James Vermont, and I'm a resident of Vavillion Cliffs, been there sixteen-and-a-half years. Um, I'm going to break this down in two parts. Let me start with the roads. Chinley, Mountain View, Old Eighty-Nine, what you want to call it, excuse my French, it sucks. Two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen, the county commission, um, tried to get a grant to repair the road. They knew that road was awful. It has not gotten any better, and it's gotten worse. Uh, the gentleman who rides his bike, I see him down there, I go down Chinley frequently, I see him, and it, he, you know, there's no place for him to go. If a truck is coming the other direction, there's no place to go but off the road, and it can be dangerous. Um, I saw the plans that they presented from UDOT, they're totally unacceptable. Yeah, they're going to give us an acceleration going east when people are going west, and, I mean, over the rise at Mountain View, you have twelve seconds to, if somebody's doing sixty-five, and nobody does sixty-five, you have twelve seconds to get to speed. Um, dangerous, and I think UDOT should reevaluate that. The second part is, in nineteen sixty-three, developer bought four-hundred-and-fifty acres out east, wanted a planned development. We're going to have streets, we're going to have lights, people are going to have grass in the front yard, nineteen-hundred people residents in the whole county, up in arms, oh my God, it's going to change the whole complexion of King County, it's Vavillion Cliffs. In seventy-three, developer buys land on the west side of the creek, turns it into ranchos. Um, ninety-eight or so, La Stancia. And then in two thousand thirteen, the big one, when we had the, the big, um, um, ad campaign, and we get the Holiday Inn, we get the Hampton, we get La Quinta, um, it changes. It doesn't necessarily make things worse, it just changes the complexion of the community. I'm because, I'm ambivalent about this, these people have done due diligence, they, as Wade would say in his planning and zoning when he was there, if you want, don't want it, buy the lot. Remember that? And, and they bought the lot. they bought the lot. And I think they are trying, at least with the bigger lots on the edge, to, to make it better for the people who live in Crimson and in Palomar. So, that's my take. Thank you very much.
Bruce Davis. I live in Vermillion Cliffs. I'll get right to the point. I'm here to voice opposition to the Canab 600, specifically to the PUD PID. There's not one of my neighbors that I know of that is in favor of this. We all want it stopped. It does go through in a manner inconsistent with the R1 zoning. Expect serious backlash, seriously. The developer requested, and has been granted, a zone change from Ag to R1 less than a year ago. Now, just months later, the developer wants a PUDPID approved. This is dishonest. This is a dishonest shell game. The answer must be no. Just wondering, is it the developer's intent to flip the Canab 600 to another developer when convenient, or when necessitated by circumstances? It's just, just wondering. Reading the develop, through the development agreement, that's a document, it would seem that the, through the PUDPID, the developer is authorized to pass infrastructure costs onto the taxpayers. So he doesn't have to build everything out, really. Okay. We are not here to be educated. We're here to be heard. Everything we need to know can be found in the development agreement and the King County Planning Commission's staff report dated 11 January 23. I have another question. Have any of you visited the site with eyes open? Ravines deep enough to swallow trucks out there, flood plains and depressions, all indicative, indicative, I can't say, indicative of major water movement during monsoon seasons, like all previous developments around Canab ignored. An example of many problems being left to the county and taxpayers. Any time left?
Yep, 30 seconds.
30 seconds. Okay. We get, existing rural developments, our substations that offered large rural lots, they could be bought and built out, or held as vacant land for future building or resale. The buyers have been locals and newcomers that found rural life near Canab to be their cup of tea. Canab 600 is entirely different. Urban style density, cookie cutter homes, strip malls, already built out, and the need to commercially entice buyers and renters to come from afar, an economy based on tourism and government jobs only. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Sam. I have four kids. I'm married. We moved back here. We were in St. George for five years. I grew up here. I, all my kids were born in the area, and I was born here also. I don't support or, you know, not support the development. My, hopefully what I can accomplish today is that I run a business here, and I have kids here. And what I'm, I respect the developer. And I'm back there hearing people snicker and say negative things about him as he's discussing his family. It's disrespectful. And it really, really makes me, it, I think that's not what Canab is. I think Canab, we welcome everybody. If you want to come here, you have a place to live. My in-laws just moved here, being in Salt Lake City 30 years. They found a house. Doyle, Ray, built the home. He's a developer. He has a family. His daughter dances with my daughter. Ben Clarkson develops. All these guys out here are from Canab. They have daughters. They have kids that play basketball every week. They're good people. I'm not saying we, we, you know, if you live in the area, and that's great. I have hundreds of acres inside city limits, outside city limits. I'm not developing. I have no anticipation to develop. I don't have a dog in the fight. What I want to say is that private property rights matter. I don't want to tell this guy what kind of fence he can build on his house, or this person what they can do with their property. If you want to have a vacation rental, great. The last time I checked, supply and demand is what creates an economy. We have a housing shortage. I've heard it a million times. We need more housing. People hate vacation rentals. There's no rentals. But vacation rentals are on the downhill because there are too many. It'll even itself out. We live in a free economy. We need housing. We need jobs. We need development. I know it's the negative work, but development is okay if we do it the right way. I support the project because I support private property rights. I like this guy. I think he does a great job. He's from the area. He was born here. And 90% of the people here aren't. But I'm grateful you're here, and I'm here now, and we should do it the right way. And I support private property rights. That's what I want to say.
Thank you.
All I heard in that speech was St. George about 18 times. This is not St. George. This is King County. This is not even Canab city limits. And you're building a development that looks like something in St. George, out in the county. And they're playing, like they say, a shell game, messing stuff around. You said your townhomes would have connecting walls. So are you talking 10 in a row with 10 on the back, so 20 units to one townhome? Or are you talking two, period? And they access it from two different streets. Section 30 hous, or Section 8 housing brings a lot of crime, because people move in because they can live there for free. So, I don't want that in my neighborhood. It might be good for my business, because people might buy more guns, because their neighbor's Section 8 housing. But also, the townhomes, you said, you want it to be 30% of the average income of King County. So let's say, I don't know what it is, there's a number out there. Is that people working? Or is that people retired? Because probably a third of the county are retired. People actually working, you're going to be building like a $250,000 townhome? I don't know. My other biggest issue is the road. My daughter built a house in Crimson, which will be right next to this subdivision, because she bought on that border. And I've drove out there probably 30 times in the last six months looking at her house as it goes. That road's dangerous. It has to be done before they ever cut any ground into their property. Make them build the road, and make it safe before you approve it. Okay? Like I say, Section 8 housing's dangerous. There's two, oh, two cops here. You can ask them, the Section 8 housing in Canab, how often do they visit it? Okay?
Oh, commissioners, Taylor Linton. I'm a resident of King County. Six generation, actually. Five generation on my father's side, six on my mother's. I truly love Canab. And, you know, I do see the housing issue that we have. I do see the affordable housing issue that has been brought up by numerous people. And commissioners, I know you guys have all responded back to my emails I sent to you. Thank you. One of the things I propose is we look at what all is inclusive of that hike in the housing bubble. Or what can we do? Yes, we can add more houses to that market, and that may do it. Some of the other things are vacation rentals. And I know there is a House Bill that has been put forth, which is House Bill 82. It applies to single housing, or, sorry, single-family housing, that limits counties and res, and cities from stopping them from doing vacation rentals. However, that is for single-family residential owned, not for investors. Let's look at people that are outside of the community, that own six or seven houses, and are taking away from that rental pool, or that housing pool that we can buy. And what can we do to keep those houses and that revenue into our community? The second thing that I look at, and I question, is when we had the public scopings, or when you guys had the public scopings for rezoning to R1, what percentage of people were against it, or not, when it was done? What was the percentage of people against the R1? Or would it not have liked to seen that change? And did we vote in that process? Did we listen to the people? That's all I, God, thank you.
Thanks, Taylor.
Hi, my name's Carrie Duff. I reside in the ranchos. And I appreciate the opportunity to come to the meeting tonight. I came because I'm curious, and because I have an open mind. And I want to find out what the issues are, and what this development is all about, because I know a lot of people are upset. I listened to the developer with an open mind. And as far as I can learn, a planned urban development is similar to a small town that is self-contained. So that's what we're really talking about, is like a community that's out there, it's away from the ranchos. I probably won't see it all the time. So I have to say that maybe it's easier for me to think about being open-minded, about something that would bring a different type of housing to Canab that has not really been here before. I need to acquaint myself more with what some of the issues are that people have brought up, so I understand that I am not very knowledgeable. But I'd like to know what this actually brings to our whole community. I'd like to know what open space, or green space, is included in the development. Are there going to be recreational opportunities for the citizens of Canab as a town that might be available in this location? And can some of the, some of the definitions and requirements for getting permits for what they want to do, can they be tied to benefits to our community, rather than just benefiting the residents who buy in? So, you know, I appreciate the fact that at least one other person has spoken in favor of this development. And I do believe that development is going to come to Canab and to King County. So this is a learning process for all of us. And I'm grateful for the opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have seven minutes of questions that I have to jam into two minutes. So here we go. I'm going to read, because I get nervous in front of a group. So, my name's Cindy Beam, and I'm a resident and landowner in Palomar Estates. So I'm right next adjacent to the property. I do support my neighbors in opposing the development altogether. But however, if it is decided that this development's going to move forward, I just, I had some concerns and questions that hopefully will, won't get answered today, but, because I have a lot of them, so. On the equestrian center zoning, on that, it's in Section 5.2 of the development agreement. So that language in there is really confusing. So they, hopefully will clean that up to clarify exactly what they mean by, they're mixing household pets with an equestrian center. So, and on their site map, there isn't an equestrian center on the map at all. So my first question would be, I would like to know where that's going to be. On one of their maps, they show an area, quote, "area to be open space with plans for future development roadway to the west," unquote. So, there's Ag Land to the west. It's 197 acres. I'm just wondering if that's where they're planning on putting that, or maybe developing that with more housing in the future. And that's the Ag Land to the west. And it's lastly on equestrian centers. Usually, they have large outdoor arenas with big pole lights and loudspeakers, and they have big events there. So I would not like to see that. So for Ask Canab 600 to be required to clarify the equestrian exception language in the development agreement, tell us where it's going to be. And what's the difference between an equestrian lot and an equestrian center? And prohibit those outdoor arena lights and loudspeakers. And then I was thinking about this, moving the multifamily housing units to the interior. So I don't see how that really improves the layout, to be honest with you. I think they, you should either remove them altogether, or keep them clustered on the main road, but on Mountain View Drive, near the commercial zones, excuse me. And the reason I don't think they should be dispersed into the interior is because, one, I think it's going to increase noise pollution. You're just going to have more cars, delivery trucks, garbage trucks, traveling into the interior, causing excessive noise, and also some light pollution from the headlights from cars shining into the windows. So if it stays on the perimeter, traffic's just going to stay there by the main road. So...
Thank you, Cindy.
Darn it.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Rae, and I just want to add my voice to the mix here, that I'm very much opposed to all of this. I live east of Canab for a reason. I live in the county for a reason. I own land east of Canab. There's not a single person that I've spoken to in the Palomar Estates area, or Vermillion Cliffs, that is in support of this. You seem like a perfectly nice person. There's a lot of, there's a lack of clarity in what you're saying. So I don't really have a lot of trust in what's been stated. You said you wanted to build a community. And what I have to say is that we already have a community here. And what I am hearing is that the community is not in support of this. What I've noticed in the community that I have here in Canab, that I love, is that we love the lands that we have access to. We love the wide open views that we have. We love being able to go out in nature and enjoy that without crowds, without any sort of city life that we all try to live away from. And for me, my question is more about the sewage treatment, the construction, how that's going to impact the land. And I haven't heard enough about that. And the footprint and the traffic, and how this affects the land in our town. And so my question is, how are you going to protect the land that we all love, that we're here? This is why we're here in Canab. And I also want to say, there's a lot of people saying that it is a done deal. And I don't necessarily agree with that. I think when people come together and raise their voices, a lot can change. So I just wanted to add that in.
I'm also from St. George. Was more or less born and raised there. And I've only been in Canab for two years. And the reason that I ended up here, because I didn't want to be in St. George anymore. And a lot of what I have heard tonight, in the first roughly 45 minutes of this meeting, was that we are trying to portion off a piece of Canab to become St. George. And what I am afraid of is that, as in your words, once a precedent is set, that there will be no end to that. Which brings me to the point that I really came up here, to this mic, to make. I showed up to this meeting so that I could learn something, so that I could hear something. I didn't come to say something. But what I witnessed, over the course of the first 45 minutes of this meeting, were a couple promises that were made by you specifically. And twice, you said that we will be here all night, if that's what it takes to hear out the members of this community. I then witnessed a number of people who, when they attempted to give their time as members of this community, you shot them down. Because they were trying to support a community member, who I only vaguely recall as being named Matt, who I would actually very much like to meet, if someone would introduce me to him. And this man seemed very well-prepared. He came with his concerns, which apparently a number of members in this community seemed to feel like they were aligned with him. But he was shot down. And I personally feel very disenfranchised by that. I feel a little bit distrustful of the commissioners in front of me, specifically, and I'm sorry, sir, but you, because you were the one that promised that we would be here all night if that's what it took. That promise was not kept. And I'm a little bit disappointed.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Sue Jotha Ramakrishna. I have emailed all you guys. Thank you very much for your responses. I wanted to take this time to just discuss a couple of things that were said at the last planning commission meeting by the planning commissioners. So I can't read this and talk at the same time. Okay. The first comment is, this does not fit with everything else out there unless we start looking at this as the city center. It's a more palatable way to look at it, as opposed to just plop this down in the middle of all the five acre lots, because it does stand out. Now, this was said in favor of approving it. Well, I think what they forgot to think about was it may be a more palatable way for them to look at it, but putting a little town out there is still against the law. There's Ordinance 9-20-1, which says that a PUD should be planned for and located in a manner that ensures harmony with the surrounding community. The commissioners at the meeting a couple of weeks ago admitted that it does not ensure harmony with the surrounding community. Therefore, it violates that ordinance. There's also Ordinance 9-7C-1, which says the Commercial 2 Zone is for heavy commercial areas, not appropriate near or in residential zones. This plan puts C2 right in the middle of a residential area. That's another ordinance violation. Then, Ordinance 9-20-3 says variations from development standards should result in a substantial benefit, not only to people in the PUD, but also to the county and its residents generally. They're asking for six exceptions... They're asking for six exceptions to the law. I have not heard one word about how any of those six exceptions benefits the community or the county. Another interesting comment made by a commissioner at the meeting was, "If we made a mistake here, it was when we zoned this R1." Well, if R1 was a mistake, then MR and C2 is an even bigger mistake. Fool me once, shame on you. Fool me twice, shame on me. They've already changed their plan three or four times in the last eight months. Who's to say that if they get permission for MR or C2 out there, we're not going to be saying, "Whoops, shouldn't have allowed that because now look what they're doing." At some point, the county commission has to step in and say, "Look, you're violating this ordinance, this ordinance, this ordinance, and the county plan, and you need to be in compliance." They've already been asked twice to change their plans. They basically said no. So here we are again. It was nice to hear tonight that he is sounding a little bit more flexible than he has before. But just to answer the question about, you said, "What would you rather have?" Because I live right out there in Crimson Estates. I don't have a problem with the one-acre lots. We have one acre in Crimson Estates, and I actually bought two acres side by side. So did my neighbors. It's a very nice development. And frankly, if what they were really concerned about was affordable housing, they would leave it all one acres, and they would let people put mobile homes out there. This is about something else than affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Lynn Dolan. I just, I so support everything she just said. That's just fantastic. I have simple questions. Is this a done deal or not? You're the answers. You're supposed to be answering me right now. Is this a done deal or not? Are we just here talking because we feel like talking, or is this a done deal?
I promised we wouldn't answer the questions, but this one will make an exception.
Thank you.
I can absolutely say, this is not a done deal.
Okay. Because everybody's saying, "I understand this is a done deal," and it's making us feel all crampy, okay? And sad. Okay, two, how is this town going to support that? We can't even, I was talking to a friend today, and I said, "Why don't we go out to lunch after we do such and such?" And we looked at each other like, "Where do you go for lunch in here, this town?" You know, we can't even support what we've got. I live on Escalante. There's a development going on behind me. Fifty percent of it is rentals, is townhomes. Okay, rentals, not townhomes, rentals. The other part's being developed as living spaces, which is going to go very well. But I don't know why we can't control the people who are coming out, buying the land, and then renting it out to people who are coming and going. That's not good for our economy. They're not invested at all in Canab. They're here to see the pretty sights, and they go. And then the next rental comes in, does the same thing. So somebody's making a lot of money, but it's not good for the community at all for that to happen. And they're everywhere. Everywhere, every time you turn around, there's, "Oh, that's a rental. Oh, that's a rental," right? And so the whole development behind me is doing that, basically. And what do you call affordable housing? What is your price for affordable housing? What does that mean?
Yeah, let's let him answer that at the end.
Okay. So I want to know dollar signs. Because I know how much people make around here, and you're going to charge them $1,000 for rent, they're not going to be able to do it.
Let's not comment from the audience.
Thank you for that, but I'm not talking to you.
Lynn, Lynn, if you could just...
Yes, sorry.
I forgot to start the timer, so let's just say you've got 30 more seconds. How's that?
Well, I'm going to be done anyway, but I think we should be very considerate of what this town can support. And we have trouble supporting what's going on now, let alone something like that. Okay?
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Carl Husser. I think you've gotten a lengthy email from me. I only want to hit on a couple of subjects from there, and then I have a question for the attorney. The first point, there's something fundamental afoot here, and that's called the social compact. And one of the things that we do is that we willingly surrender certain property rights in exchange for guarantees from the government that we will enjoy those property rights, and that similarly-zoned properties will be treated the same way. Now, what's happening now is my property rights are being abridged because a similarly-zoned area is being changed. I can't open a business on my property because it's zoned R1. Okay? He can open, or they can open, I'm not sure who they are, but the LLC, can develop properties that would violate my property rights if I tried to do that on my R1 property. Essentially, what happens is when we buy property in a zoned area, you've made promises to us, and those promises are that our property rights that we retained by giving some others away are going to be protected. That's not happening here. It's clearly not happening here. The other point I want to make is there was a 1926 Supreme Court decision, Euclid v. Ambler. It was the decision that enabled zoning laws across the United States to take place. And the village of Euclid had six zoning, six zones, six districts. And a developer objected, saying that, "Well, you're abridging our rights," actually is a due process argument. But one of the things that the Supreme Court talked about was putting apartment complexes, they specifically called this out, putting multifamily dwellings in a residential area, and the problems that accrue from doing that. It was, it's a blissfully short decision, okay? But maybe a third of the decision was their discussion of how putting multifamily dwellings in a residential area destroy the residential area. The other issue is that multifamily dwellings benefit from the residential area in which they're built, but the residential area does not benefit from the multifamily dwellings. So it's a one-way deal. We give up more property rights, and we get fewer. And the question I have for the attorney is, I want to know how this varies or differs or is the same as a variance procedure.
Thank you, Carl. Let's have him answer that at the end. Thank you.
Hi, Jim Harris. Know a few of you out there. Personally, I don't like talking to them because I have a hard time listening out there. So I'm going to do it halfway, if it's okay.
We'll let you, Jim.
Very many, a lot of important topics have come up, and I agree with a lot of them. And I'm going to need two and a half minutes, so I took notes and wrote it in shorthand to get it through. But my concern is the water. I moved here 25 years ago. I cannot wear white clothes. Kane County come in, dug the well up there to Church Ranch. We were voted number six best in the state. Moved another well halfway up Johnson Canyon. We gave water to Vermillion Cliffs, and all the growth that you see out there now on the east side of town. Water demand got higher. We drilled well number three up to the top of Johnson Canyon. Initial test was the water was good and potable. Since then, it just went downhill. I used to be able to wash my vehicle and wipe the windows. Not true anymore. Here's an article posted in the Sun News, report on the Kane County Water Conservancy wells up Johnson Canyon. Two thousand people are going to need a lot of water. Read my own writing. Now, we are on the edge of not having potable water. Those who are using the water up Johnson Canyon, you notice all that crustaceans you get in your faucets, TDS and sulfites, sulfur. The last measurement of those three wells on TDS, Totally Dissolved Solvents, is 832. The state limit is 1,000, and we're approaching that number quickly. And if we continue to draw on those wells, it's going to make it. The other item that's measured in this report is sulfate. It's 439 parts per million. If it reaches 500, we have to prove to the state that we can't find better water. The cost of filtering these two items out of our drinking water is prohibitive.
Jim, we went two and a half minutes, and it was a good two and a half. I appreciate you. Are you almost done, Jim?
Yes, I am. So my point is that an increase in draw on this water will continue to decrease our current water standards. I propose to the board, to the contractors, to you, that they prove to me that they'll be able to sustain our potable water without charging the taxpayers, the users of Kane County water, to foot the bill. Questions?
Thank you, Jim. Thank you.
I wanted to thank Commissioner Cabaya and Commissioner Meyer for jumping from the frying pan into the fire. You're going to have some tough decisions ahead of you. I got a couple of emails this afternoon and decided to come to the meeting to find out more about it. I should have gone to planning and zoning. I didn't. Apologize for that. But I learned quite a bit from the two emails, and I have some concerns. I have a concern about how this project, another similar high-density project within our county, is negatively influencing the future growth of our county. As the way many people have said, quality of life, rural lifestyle, all of that, the ambiance of living in Kane County will be destroyed by high density. We have a general plan, and we have planning and zoning regulations. But I hear that in the past, our planning commission and the only commission itself, and other people, that people buy property and they have a right to do what they want with it. That's not true. They buy property here, they buy it under the conditions of the general plan, planning and zoning regulations, and that's what they're entitled to. They're entitled to no more. Just because you have a PUD on the books doesn't mean you should approve a PUD. A PUD significantly changes the scope of our county from a rural county to a municipal type entity. This PUD, as I have heard described tonight, belongs in Canab City or immediately adjacent to it where it would subsequently be incorporated by Canab City. We've heard the developer apparently bought the land at agriculture to develop, and then he wanted to change it to R1, which is a serious mistake by the county, in my opinion, to go to R1 in our rural ag 10 areas. Serious mistake. So now, it's morphed from agricultural to R1. Now it's morphing to a PUD. And I can tell you from my experience, you cannot trust developers. You've got to watch every move they make. You've got to have bonding to make sure they follow their commitments. As a commissioner, I had hard surface Vermillion Cliffs Estates because the developer walked away. We know the issues with Listonia. We know the current issues in Mount Charleston, right? And we also know the development issues and the public outcry against what's going on in East Zion, including a 66% vote to defeat an electric shuttle system that wasn't even well-coordinated. In my opinion, from what little I know about this project, it has not been coordinated. It has not been developed near the detail it needs to be developed at. I think it should be sent back to planning and zoning. The public should get involved at that level, provide more specific input, and then we move forward from there. But my main point tonight is as county commissioners, particularly new county commissioners, this election was about change. You have a responsibility to change Kane County's administration from the way it has been going for the last several years. I hope you accept that responsibility. Send it back to planning and zoning, rework it up. There's nothing that says this developer can't develop what he needs to do now that you have R1. He can develop his density how he likes, large lots, small lots. He can bring horses in, he can do whatever he wants. You get into multiple-family, multi-story dwellings, and you get into commercial, you're significantly changing it from both ag, where it started, and R1, where it is now. And I would caution you, do not go there. Do not go with a PUD. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. We all owe that man a debt of gratitude in this county. He served all of us for a long time as a commissioner, and we appreciate his work.
Thank you, Commissioners. These last two men were our good friends of mine. Mark's my neighbor. I worked with him for 16 years when I was in the legislature, and I appreciate what he says. We may disagree on a few things, but in general, I really appreciate the man. Jim worked for me, for the Water Conservancy District, for many, many years. About a year ago, he called me about this information, and I just want to tell you that there are no problems with the Water Conservancy District as far as water goes. So we have a well, well number three, drilled in Navajo Sandstone. We've had some problems with sodium, and so we have solved those problems, we believe, by pumping the well for about 14 hours before we put it online. So those problems are solved. Couple of things I want you to know. I've heard a lot about the people in Vermillion Cliffs. Mr. Carter, not Tom Carter, he wants to, he said he gave us their water rights. Water rights in Vermillion Cliffs are worthless. They're, when they took, when we took over their system at their request and their vote, they were talking about 1,000 parts per million. They were at 2,000 parts per million. Judy Skinner, the operator, came to our meetings every month. She was the certified operator, and she literally begged us. One time, she came in and said, "Look in this bucket. Water was black. The reverse osmosis system didn't work." So Mr. Carter, we did take over your system. We provided you with excellent water out of the Navajo Sandstone and also out of the Lambs Point Tongue, good quality water. And somebody complained to me that their water rates are too high. We have some of the lowest water rates in the state of Utah. Check it out. We have some of the lowest usage of water. We're at .24 acre feet per connection, .14 on Cedar Mountain. We have almost 4,000 connections, and I haven't heard these complaints until I got here. But the water is good. We don't want to tell people that we have bad water. That's the worst thing you can do for property values, is to spread a rumor like that, and we have adequate water. So I want to be, people at the commission, to be assured of that. Another thing I want to tell you is, after 16 years in the legislature, I've found that a lot of these meetings, you get a bunch of people out, but they're not necessarily the heart of the whole community. You look at the vote, how many people voted in the last election, and some of the things they voted on. So you hear all this going.
Let's be respectful.
But you'll find, when you go up there, and I went through this for 16 years, and what you found out was, vote for people's rights. You have an individual property right. It doesn't extend to your neighbor. It doesn't extend across the street. Protect the rights of the people.
Thank you, Mike. We're out of time. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. John Race, I serve on the Planning and Zoning Board, so I've heard a lot of this several times, but I guess I've sat there for a long time and felt that I needed to just make one comment. I believe in the last two years, this is the third time that this whole body of citizens that live out east of Canab has dealt with this exact piece of property. All of them opposed it going from ag to R1. Their voice wasn't heard. It went to R1. All of them opposed it in November, when it came before the Planning and Zoning Board to be made a PUD. Planning and Zoning Board, they recommended to the commission to deny the PUD, yet nothing really happened. They gave them a bunch of recommendations. Well, they didn't change anything. They just waited till a new commission came onboard, brought the exact same thing back... They just waited till a new commission came onboard, brought the exact same thing back, brought it to the board in January where we looked at it again and the board had changed a little bit and it got recommended approval to the board. But all the time, these same citizens here have been opposing it and opposing it and opposing it. They're getting to the point where, does their voice even matter? They oppose it, nobody listens to them, nobody cares. Now, I appreciate Greg. I'm not anything against Greg. I think Greg's a great guy and I think he's trying to do the right thing. I just don't think that east of Canab, where this development is, is the proper place for this development. My biggest thing is I would encourage you to listen to the people of King County, the citizens that are here that really care about it, the ones that voted you in, the ones that pay taxes right now, and listen to their voices. And my last thing is, and I know I'm out of time, but how do these developers or how do these different zone changes, we just keep getting it back? If they, we don't like, if they don't like the developers, and nothing against Greg by any means, but if they don't like the answer they get, they wait a couple of months and bring it back again. And if I'm not mistaken, I think there's one coming next month for Planning and Zoning Board out to East Zion. I think this will be the fourth time that we've heard a desired zone change on that piece of property. And I guess my thing is, we need to set some kind of a limit of how many times the same piece of property gets rammed back at Planning and Zoning and at you as commissioners for rezoning in a year's period of time. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for serving on Planning and Zoning, John.
My name's Russ Duff. I've been here about seven years and appreciate you guys. And a couple, I mean, I was glad to hear it's not a done deal. Obviously, probably, I would agree that changing it from Ag was not a great idea, but going further is even a worse idea. And there seems to be that, well, the gentleman mentioned, checkerboard is not the way it goes. They have to have a development plan, it has to be a development plan that makes sense and is good for the community. And that would mean, well, A, you don't get 600 lots out of 600 acres. There's infrastructure, there's roads, et cetera. So it's not going to be 600 acres, no matter what you do. But you can demand, the planning can demand that it's done aesthetically, which means curving roads, which means a certain amount of park area, and you can demand recreation area. And you definitely, my main thing is that you make sure that they pay their costs, all the costs associated with it that could bounce back on the taxpayers. If it needs better roads, if it needs, if it needs a sewer plant, if it needs its own wells, whatever it needs, they, you have to make sure they pay for it upfront. I mean, they guarantee it's going to be paid for before they get any approvals. Then you have to make sure that they live up to what they promise. They're hoping to make millions of dollars and spend as little as possible. That's a great dream for them, but for the county, you have to look out for the benefits of everybody else and not their benefits. Make sure that, that, you know, keep it at one acre and make it aesthetic. Don't guarantee it's 600 houses, make it 300 or 200 or whatever works well for the benefit of everybody. And then make sure that they pay all their costs and nothing comes back to the taxpayers. Thanks.
Thank you.
My name's Jan and I live east of town. And I totally do not go along with the developer. I don't think we should do this. I don't think this spot zoning is good for this. It's not a good plan. R1, we can accept, but this rammed-in city dwelling is not what we want. We didn't move here to live in a city. We moved here to live where the cows and the horses and the cattlemen and the farmers are the people that run this community. And what are you going to do about that, where the eight-mile gap road comes into 89? You know, all that flooding on the other side? What are you going to do about the flooding on the other side of the highway, on the south side of the highway? There's going to be a lot of it out there. And they had the people that know what they're doing to plan those and it still gets flooded. So I totally agree with Mr. Bruce Davis, Mr. Alan Seabommer, and Mr. Brian Karnowski. They had sent you letters or written letters in the newspapers and I printed you out a copy in case you don't have a copy. Sold it.
Thank you.
Okay, good. Because you need to have that. And I totally agree with this birthday girl.
There is no rest for the wicked.
Hi, Commissioners. Thanks for your service. I too feel like this is probably a done deal in one way or another. And I expect you as commissioners are looking at this through the lens of private property rights. And that should be for all private property owners. The change that was made, you know, has already been stated, you know, one acre, you know, from R2 to R1, Mag to R1, excuse me, was probably the biggest mistake that was made. And so going further than that is an even bigger mistake. But at this point, I think that the main thing that I would like to see, considering that it's a done deal, is that the commissioners and the planning commission are strategic, they're thoughtful, and they're fair. I attended the planning meeting a couple of weeks ago and I felt like, I mean, I was embarrassed. I didn't feel like any of that took place. I appreciate John and I appreciate Gwen and their perspective, but they tried to seat of the pants, make recommendations that, you know, for changes to the PUD. And it was totally seat of the pants. There was very little thought or strategy put into that. And so my request is that as commissioners and going back to the Planning and Zoning Commission, that we stop and think very strategically, very thoughtfully, and very fairly because I don't think that everyone is really recognizing and understanding the magnitude of decisions like this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Patrick Jacklin, I live east of town. I came in honestly wise-eyed, open, and wanted to hear from both sides. The irony and the ironic thing is, is that there were more data points raised by the community than there were by Greg, the developer. And the interesting data point that he raised that I caught up on was, he swung by the treasurer's office and determined that the tax rate for non-owner-occupied properties is 1% and then 4.55% for occupied, which equates to about roughly $1.5 million annually. What I would want to know is from an economic impact study perspective, does that support the current infrastructure? So how much of that $1.5 million, which is really gross, does the community net that can, goes back into further development for the rec center and future improvements of the overall community? So, you know, my recommendation would be to take almost an economic and environmental impact study to, so there's infrastructure, people have mentioned water, floodplain, energy cost, and then do a five-year projection, 10-year projection. So this isn't the first and it won't be the last development request and we need to understand the impact today, tomorrow, and 10 years from now. And so it'd just be, I think, a really phenomenal thing for the community to understand what is the value back to the community. I mean, aesthetically, I think it's horrible, just like Spring Hill Suites. I had some guests come into town and they were like, "What is this atrocious thing, you know, that's sitting over top of an RV park that then covers the beauty of the Red Rocks?" So the last thing we want, and Rancho's honestly is a little more aesthetically pleasing because it kind of sits in the foothills and there's juniper trees that really kind of create some privacy and protection. And, you know, the, out east is just wide open. So this is my recommendation and, you know, just a really interesting data point that they came in with all the data facts, noting, you know, articles of regulation, code ordinances, et cetera, and he's just coming in and saying some anecdotal things. Thanks.
Anyone else?
I need more time.
My name is Bruce Spear. One of my wife's biggest concern is our ability to gain another 2,000 people. We have a small hospital. We have the county not wanting to do their part in having fire service in the county. They want to make each little place pay for their own. It's a county thing. Everywhere else in the, in the state, it's more a county business. They want to shovel off businesses to other entities. Let's have fire service and we'll all pay for it, but don't make small areas do it. That's the biggest thing.
Thank you. Great comments. Anyone else? Thanks to all those that have spoken. This really has been beneficial for me, hopefully to the other commissioners as well. Please.
Hi, all. One thing, I feel like Commissioner Hayton's getting quite a bit of heat here for chairing this meeting. We all wanted to have this hearing. We all wanted to hear from you. And he chairs the meetings because he's the chair of the commission. That's a big job. He's put a lot on his shoulders. And please don't make him the bad guy in this. We're not against him and please be gracious to him. He wanted to hear from you. It's not like he's being forced into this. Thank you. One more thing, my perspective about whether or not it's a done deal. It is a done deal in that something will be developed there. And what this is about is hearing from you, whether or not you prefer, or whether you prefer R1 or whether you prefer a PUD. And I'm just hearing from all of you and I really value your input. It's not a done deal that it will be a PUD. It's a done deal that it will be something. I just wanted to bring clarity to that point. Thank you.
Thank you. And you don't have to take it easy on me. It's fine. My skin's gotten quite a bit thicker the last few years. Sister Cabeia, or I mean, Commissioner Cabeia, anything you want to add?
No, just appreciate everybody being here. And, you know, we weren't quite sure on, I'm new to this, Lissa's new to this, and Wade is a little more experienced, but, you know, maybe in the future, we need to do a little different with how long people get to talk, but, you know, we're all learning in this process.
Well, thank you. So we've hit the two-hour mark. We've got a handful of questions that I think some of them have been somewhat addressed and I'm not even sure how to chop into them. Just, Greg, I'm a little hesitant to have you get up and just dive into all of them. What if we hit them one at a time and perhaps we could have Rob or Greg weigh in on some of these? Some of these questions, we simply don't know the answers to yet. This is the beginning of the process, folks. A lot of you have said this seems very unfinished. There's a good reason for that. It is very unfinished. There's a lot more work that needs to be done, a lot more decisions that need to be made, a lot more details that have got to get ironed out in meetings just like this. So the answer is going to be, we don't know yet, to some of these questions. Commissioners, are you okay with that, kind of attacking the questions as best we can? Greg, maybe come up to the mic if you could. There's a couple of these that are going to be directly to you. And maybe speak to us if you could. Tell us your thoughts on an HOA. Do you have an intent to have an HOA?
There likely will be some type of HOA. So however, that, defining what the HOA does, how much it is, and its involvement in your everyday life is to be determined because we just, frankly, yet, we don't know what we have. So, okay. However, my feeling on HOAs, my personal feeling, is I don't like living in an HOA. So I believe that they serve a purpose for governance when there is no governance or very little governance. However, you know, I don't like when HOAs, you know, tell you to bring your garbage can in within an hour of it being picked up and all that. So I'm more focused on freedom than I am on restrictions. However, there will be an HOA of some type. We have to maintain roads. We're putting in sidewalks, we have trail systems. There's a lot of, there's a lot of common area that needs to be maintained and that likely, the HOA will likely pay some place, some type of role, as well as, it's been touched on, you know, obviously there's townhomes and some vacation homes and things of that nature which would likely be governed by HOA. But HOAs varies, it's a huge spectrum of good and bad, and so it's tough to easily just say yes or no. Yes, there will be one. A lot of that is getting worked out.
Okay.
Internally, we fight about it.
Sure.
Can I add to that?
Please.
So the county doesn't require HOAs. The county does require CCNRs at the subdivision stage. So not at this, not at the PUD stage, but we do require CCNRs at the subdivision stage. We don't have requirements for what's in the CCNRs. So to the extent that the developer is saying, "We want to impose the dark sky ordinance from Canab City," or "We want to impose restrictions on vacation rentals" or whatever, and the additional restrictions they want to place on themselves, those items won't be fully fleshed out in CCNRs until later on, but if the county does want to accept and impose those requirements on them, they do need to be addressed at the PUD stage in the development agreement with the PUD.
Thank you.
Rob, actually, that brings up a great, a really good point. There will definitely be an HOA and in the CCNRs, so because that...
You don't have to have an HOA within CCNRs.
We will, for a long...
Sometimes there is an organization to help enforce the CCNRs.
Yeah, absolutely. And then, because we want to enforce dark sky, we want to enforce animal, you know, the development agreement might say 15, but the CCNR or HOA might say five, right? So just because you can, we limit it. So one of the big ones is we are not allowing all the, all of the lots to be vacation homes. As a matter of fact, we put in vacation homes to restrict everyone else. So we don't want the townhomes, we don't want the single-family homes, we don't want the aggression. Those are not vacation, nightly rental. We will not allow those to be nightly rentals. So we specifically isolated a nightly rental area so everybody else isn't, and that will be defined in the CCNRs and the HOA.
So thank you. That was going to be one of my questions. So the normal homes and lots you sell, the single-family dwellings, it will not be allowed, they can be short-term rentals, but that there will be a portion of short-term rentals in the development?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, thank you. There was a question about townhomes. Do you have a plan yet, what your town, are they going to be twoplexes, fourplexes?
You can generally see on the plan, it actually shows the little, the little units. So that's being flushed out. That doesn't fully get flushed out at this stage, but it's pretty close. I would anticipate there being some twoplexes, some fourplexes, possibly a sixplex. I don't think we even get to eightplex, but I think that's, I think that's where it goes. So maybe up to eight, but I don't even think that. Most of them are twos and fours.
Thank you. There were several questions and concerns about the sewer. I know you mentioned you haven't decided what, what style and what product you're going with yet. Can you give a little more in-depth discussion of that? Is there a pond? How do you mitigate smells, all those sorts of things?
Yeah, well, the best way is just people smell better. I mean, yeah. I brought an engineer because, you know, he knows a lot more than me.
Yeah, I'll speak to the sewer question. So like you said, some details need to be flushed out, but the targeted solution that we're targeting here is a mechanical treatment process. So not a total containment lagoon like you see in many small communities where you have the big sewer lagoons. It's not what we're going for. It'd be a mechanical treatment, so be housed with inside of a building. And there's a lot of different technologies, MBR, SMBR, alternatives to that. But the goal here is to create a more sustainable product so that the water could be reused, you know, for secondary applications. And typically, total containment lagoons... And typically total, total containment lagoons and similar types of products aren't going to treat to the level that a mechanical treatment process will. That's the direction we're targeting. Any treatment process or sewer system would have to be approved and permitted through the Division of Environmental Quality. And so they'll certainly review all the technical reports, all the engineering drawings, et cetera, et cetera. Included in those studies would be, you know, like concern about groundwater quality. But being a mechanical treatment process that can treat, you know, to a very high standard will limit that even more so than septic systems because it's not just going into the ground as, as concentrated effluent, so.
So to stay there, if you would, speaking to that, then there were several concerns about groundwater contamination and a lot of that. Can you explain how that process works with the DEQ?
Yeah, certainly. So like I mentioned, any, any permit, even if it were just a septic system, that's all, it's all reviewed by, you know, a simple single family home would be reviewed by the local health department and permitted through there. A, a system this large is, is permitted at a, at a higher level, at the state level, rather than just the, the, the local level. And so there are, there is concern when a great number of individual septic systems is installed in, in a concentrated footprint because of groundwater pollution issues. So the next step above the individual septic systems would be to treat it at a more regional level so that you can get a higher, a higher quality of effluent from, from the treatment process. So the, the groundwater is, is protected a whole lot more in mechanicalized treatment, rationalization process versus just a whole bunch of septic systems out there. Does that answer your question?
No, you bet. It's important to point out again that the sewer system, that infrastructure, there are not plans for that at this point and there, there shouldn't be. We don't want those plans yet. Right now, we're just talking about approval of the PUD. And whether this project goes forward as a PUD or not, that, that part of it is dealt with on the subdivision process. So once they get to the point where they submit their application for subdivision, then they start submitting their plans, including plans for sewer. A representative from the DEQ will be invited to be part of our development, development meetings, which is handled at the staff level. And, and they will inform us at the county of whether their plans have been approved or not or changes that are required. And we won't proceed with the process past certain points until we get that approval from DEQ. Yeah, I think he said.
Department of Environmental Quality.
Well, thank you. I just, and commissioners, I'm sure you've got some questions written down. I have an address. But Greg, maybe for you, talk to us a little bit about your discussions with UDOT and maybe what your potential plans are for accessing 89. And then please mix in your thoughts on Mountain View Drive.
Yeah, I'm going to end up having my engineer come back up. So, so he, he does all of the, a lot of the state permitting. So the DEQ is all, that's a state entity. So it's governed by the state. So is obviously UDOT. So actually I'll have him come. He can speak better than me.
So there was a traffic, a traffic impact study done on this property to determine the impact from the traffic and its availability to, to come onto this piece of property. The, there's currently a access on Mountain View Drive, you know, maybe a mile and a half or two miles west. And then a, there is also currently a right-of-way for the county. There's not a road built there yet, but there is an existing right-of-way just north of this existing property. Between the, the engineers that performed the traffic study for, for UDOTs and, and Kane County roads, you know, there's a couple of meetings to decide where the preferred access location is. And obviously UDOT has a lot of standards with access locations and traffics coming on, off the highway at different locations. It was preferred that the mountain, the.
Okay, and I, I better remember the name of the intersection there to the west. Would, would be the, the starting point of access coming onto Mountain View Drive. In the traffic study, it kind of illustrates improvements that would be required along Highway 89 to accommodate the additional traffic load. So deceleration lane would be required at, at, at that intersection. An acceleration lane would be required, but it's not, it's not all immediately. They, they do this as phased, phasing out based on the total traffic load. So you know, it's, it's something, when this full thing is built out, it's actually, which you know, could take 20 years or, or more. The access further to the east is recommended to be improved by UDOT. And similar to like the permitting through DEQ, I mean, UDOT's going to review all the plans and specifications and it's going to be done to UDOT standards. And the county road department as well as UDOT will obviously be able to approve and, and sign off on those when those improvements are made. Yes, to answer your question, improvements to intersection to the west and intersection to the east before this thing's fully built out.
Commissioners, let's, maybe let's let the commissioners ask any more questions that they've made a note of and then maybe we can go back to the audience. Greg, please.
I was just going to say, and then I believe that, you know, Mountain View, first of all, I drove, I drive Mountain View. Everybody drives, everybody drives Mountain View. I drove it today. I went out and it, it needs work, you know? It's, it's, I think it's sufficient for what it is right now. However, anymore, it's going to need more. I mean. Hey, I guess, yeah, I can, if it's insufficient, I'm not, I haven't built anything yet. Okay? So that's not my, that's not me. Okay? That's, that's every, everything else. But I, so I think as of today, it's, it is, is adequate. It could be widened for sure. And yeah, I'd love there to be bike lanes and all of the things on Mountain View. We intend to fully widen and, and work with the group to, you know, improve Mountain View where it needs to be. But that's, we're still a little premature. That, we don't actually know what we have yet. We have to work with the county to figure this out. So unfortunately, the answer is it's a work in progress, but we're, we're open to working with it.
No, thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions we haven't covered?
Yeah, I do think it's premature, but people do have questions about is there going to be a lot of construction traffic on Mountain View during the build? How is that going to be managed? And I don't expect you to have answers right now. I just expect you to catalog that these are concerns that we have and things that we want addressed in the future.
Yeah, that, and that's a good, and that's a good.
Either way, whether it's subdivision or PUD, I think.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. So oftentimes during developments, so it's expensive to get the truck. You don't want trucks to move very far, you know, during, it's expensive. That's the most expensive part is moving the vehicles. So you try to keep everything onsite if you can during the construction period. The, this is relatively flat ground, so there's not a lot of dirt getting moved on or off. However, road base and gravel will have to come on for the roads and the concrete. That would be, that would be the gist of it. But most of the trucks would stay where they're at with the occasional road base truck and things of that, that has to bring outside materials on. But as much as possible, we, we want everything to stay there. That's our intent.
And specifically what I'm wanting to know is sometimes developers will damage the road with all the heavy trucks and stuff. And, and then they'll repair the road or bring it back to the level of, at least that it was before once a phase is completed or, you know, that's what kind of, I don't expect an answer right now.
Yeah, okay. And honestly, we can work together to address any of those concerns.
I do have a concern with the drainage. I mean, even in the ranches, they put sewer for the new elementary school and you drive up that road and mother nature goes, mother nature does what mother nature is going to do. And there's all kinds of holes. Obviously they need ditches in the ranches or something. But what kind of studies has been required or is that at a later phase?
Oh, no, we've, we've done a lot on that. So I'll, I'll let Kelly come up in a moment, but I, I do want to speak briefly to that before he comes up. So as we were putting this together and working with the engineers, I, I, we were, he was showing me the drainage plan. So drainage plan's a big part of a development is, is mapping where natural drainage has happened and then allowing the water to flow from off and then onto your site and then off your site. And it has to be collected and organized. And there's a, a lot of water flow. Like I could, like when we started doing the study and then we're looking at the cubic yards of water and I'm like, holy smokes, there is just so much. So, so we have anticipated this. And part of the PUD packet, there's, you'll actually be able to see some, some sliced kind of views of what the drainage will look like. Some, some of those are, are pretty big drainage areas. So we, we have definitely planned for water. I, he can go into it a lot more, you know, engineeringly. But it, yeah, it's, we definitely planned for it. These, these drainage basins are deep and, and large. So, but we've, we've definitely planned.
As our planning and zoning, come on up Kelly, as our planning and zoning member mentioned in meeting a few weeks ago, we're having these 500-year storms about every four years now. So they better, they better have some good drainage.
Yeah, mother, mother nature's a harder one to predict. Before I jump into storm drain, sorry, I, I spoke kind of vaguely on the intersections. It's Red Plateau Road and Vista Avenue are the two intersections that are to be improved. Drainage, yeah. So I, I think it was mentioned earlier by someone that, you know, some of the existing infrastructure upstream of this property or upgrading of this property is perhaps under styres and there's issues. And as we analyze the, the stormwater volume to be, to come onsite, we realized the same thing. There's a lot of upstream bottlenecks. But irregardless of that, the analysis that was performed was to evaluate what the 100-year storm would look like, both onsite and offsite. And what I mean by that is this piece of property, the 600 acres, acres is a recipient of lot of water upstream and up gradient. So somehow we need to manage that as it comes on the site so, so as not to, to cause damage to homes and roads and et cetera. The second portion is now that if this piece does get developed, there's more hardscape, which means more runoff and a greater volume of water that's generated on the site, on the 600 acres. So there's two components that need to be managed. And the, the drainage plan right now shows that the preferred method to manage all of this is, is a combination of different things. But one, some open channel ditches that is what kind of Greg was alluding to. I think he was somewhat surprised on the size of those, but they're, they are, they are large. And you know, all the details in the drainage report and we'd be happy to sit down and go through the numbers anytime. But so large open channel drainage structures, some culverts and some box culverts at, at, at road crossings, et cetera. But you, you look, if you've been, seen the property, there's large drainages onsite already. We're trying to utilize some of that to help, you know, then water's naturally flowing through the site through those large washes that have been eroded and created over time. We're trying to use those, create them bigger and, and bring the water from northwest is to southeast is, or sorry, northeast to southwest is how that site grades.
I don't remember you all addressing the 20% open space with the PUD. And what I don't know is whether or not the flood control is counted in the 20% or if it's additional that needs to be not developed.
Yeah, so actually that's one of the, the big benefits. If you, if you can see on the southwest portion, we have a lot of open space. That's kind of some of the natural flood area as well. So it, they, they go hand in hand. So they, they work together. Having the open space helps quite a bit with drainage control as well.
I do have a question. Would you have to have the same drainage control whether you do PUD or whether it's developed as some kind of other subdivision?
You'd, you'd have same, you'd have similar, similar drainage, yes.
We're going to go out on a limb right here and, and take a couple more questions from the audience.
I wrote down some questions. Do you want me to?
Please, if you could, just a couple of seconds. Greg said he wrote down some of the questions that we haven't addressed yet. If you could just be really quick and then we would like to give the audience just a chance to ask more.
I made notes from their questions, if there's more, but.
There may be some new ones.
Okay. Number one, happy birthday. Okay. So I addressed it earlier, vacation homes. We, our, our intent is to limit the amount of vacation homes to a vacation area and not have it taken over by people who buy it from outside and don't live here. We want, first and foremost, we want a community and that's, that's, that's the intent. Let's see, PUD, when you're, when you're doing a PUD, you, you, you can't go from agriculture to PUD. You have to go from, you have to go from some type of residential zone to a PUD. So there, it wouldn't have been, we, it, it's not like we're trying to be sneaky. You have to go in and determine densities prior to applying for a PUD. And so that's why we've had to come back a couple of times because we had to establish what the densities were so that the PUD had something to go off of. It doesn't quite work with the agriculture. So that's why we came back. It wasn't me trying to do anything under the table. It's you establish the, the residential zone and then you come in with the PUD afterwards. That's, that's, that's the process. It has to be that way. Let's see. There's a little jog to the west. Someone brought that little road up. Right now, that's not a road, kind of halfway down in the development. That's part of the 600 acres that's owned here. However, it, it goes into a private road. And so as of today, we're not using it. We assume in the future, if it ever becomes a county road, that can be another road. So it's, right now, it's just extra space to the west, but it's unused. I, I just wanted to bring that up. So probably a future road at some point. Right now, there's some language in the development agreement, which we're going to have to kind of fix as we go through it. One of those was the equestrian center. I know that got brought up. I don't, or if she's here. However, so there's, right now, there's not a designated equestrian center. It's the lots are equestrian lots. And so we'll have to, if it, if it's referring to equestrian center, either we'll have to designate an equestrian center and have it obey the dark sky lighting, which was a concern, or we just eliminate that language from the development agreement that there's not necessarily an equestrian center, but the lots are allowed for equestrian use. Alrighty. Okay, another concern that was brought up, when you do a planned unit development, that is the zone. So where there's neighborhood commercial and there's multifamily, those are not individual zones that could later be manipulated as a zone. Those are just PUD zones. They're not necessarily C2, they're not necessarily multifamily zone. Those are the PUD zone. And so it's, that neighborhood commercial is already defined of what you can use. It's, you're not necessarily, like when you get into the code specifically, that's not a C2 zone. So that is a PUD zone. So you go from the, the county code. It gets a little bit in the weeds, but that is not a C1 or a C2 zone. It's a PUD zone overlay. So anyway, I, I'd be happy to go into the details, but it can't be manipulated the way that some, some people might think. It's, it's in stone, the way it's going to lay out and be used. So that one's a little in the weeds, but I'd be happy to talk about it. Okay, one other thing that came up a couple of times was section eight and affordable housing. Okay, so I am the chairman of the Housing Authority. I don't, I don't believe that Kane County has a housing authority. I would love there to be a housing authority in Kane County, but there's not one. So section eight, those are vouchers. Essentially what that means is the federal government can issue vouchers to people who need them for financial assistance. Those vouchers can be used at any, anywhere, any house, any apartment. And they, and then your, your pay is 30% of what you bring in. And if you bring in nothing, then your pay is nothing. Those, those vouchers, the Housing Authority will get a certain amount of those. We have about 325 in Washington County. So you apply for them. If you, if you meet the criteria, you can, you can use those vouchers for anywhere you can rent. Section 42 is a specific location of that same thing. It's almost like a specific affordable housing voucher that is permanent to a location. So those are not governed by a housing authority. Those are governed by the, the federal government that you apply for. So, um, we are not, today, we're not planning on having section 42 housing. Uh, it sounds, sounded to me like some people were for it, some people were against it. And, um, you know, maybe there's a, a case where 20 could be that. I, I'm open to having a discussion. I'm, I am empathetic of people who need assistance. And especially, uh, we have a, we, we brought in a whole vet, a whole, uh, we brought in a whole bunch of vouchers specifically to help vets that needed help and, and, and pay their re- all, all of that. I, I'm, I'm very much a proponent on this case. Um, I don't know what, I don't know what's best for this community yet, is this, is the truth. But as of today, we're not necessarily applying for section 42 housing here. But I would encourage and I would help if, wherever I can, to help with the county in getting section eight, a housing authority to at least get some vouchers in, into the county, so.
Soon as Greg finishes up, we'll, we'll come back and, and hit a few questions from the audience. Did you cover all that Greg?
There's one more thing. Um, I know, I know a lot didn't change from the first P&amp;Z. Uh, when we came to first P&amp;Z, we didn't go to the commissioners in December because we decided to go back to P&amp;Z. And I know not, not a lot changed. Um, some of the changes that were requested was things like we want only, n- nothing smaller than half, half an acre, or nothing smaller than an acre. And I, and I completely understand that. But what that's describing is not a PUD. So if, if the request was come back with no PUD, then that, that would have been, that would have been something. What I took from the meeting and what was in my, my pouch of control was we, we definitely want dark sky ordinance, we definitely want fire protection and we want thing, those, those were the two biggest ones. Obviously, um, we, we had heard things like, um, no multifamily or of those, you know, we don't want the density. But the reality is the density is there. I- if we don't just, if we just don't want a PUD, that's one thing. So when we came back, we made changes to add fire protection, to add, um, dark sky ordinances and things of that nature. Uh, and that's, it wasn't me trying to strategically come to different people. It was, let's, let's make small changes. When you do a development, it's really hard. Here's a big piece of ground. I don't know what, what these guys want. I don't know what these guys want necessarily. All I can do is say, here's my idea, right? And then they say, well, we don't like this and this and this. It comes back, it, the process takes time. And so, yes, we keep coming back and we have to make changes. And sometimes there's small incremental changes. We made changes from the last group. If you see the map back here, we moved all the multifamily off of the outskirts. We broke it up into pieces. And so, you know, we're trying to listen. It's a process and, and I understand that. And, um, so we, we do the best we can.
Thanks Greg. Um, so I want to be fair to everyone. We're going out on a little bit of a limb here and, and so I want to be fair, but we need to be somewhat orderly as well. Uh, let's start with some, uh, questions in the audience, Greg, or whoever we decide to answer it. Let's keep our answers as short as we can. I'm seeing some heavy eyelids out there and nobody's gonna admit that, but I know this group that's still left are not quitters. And so you're not gonna leave till the meeting's over. So let, let's be considerate to everybody in the crowd and, and we'll try to, uh, get through the questions and wrap this up. Let's start with Mark and work our way around. You can call me Wade all day, sir. Exactly. Could you stand Mark and as quick, as loud as you could?
Uh, that's a good question. So he's asking if we, um, had kept the county commission basically in the loop that we were gonna do something like this when we were going from Ag to R1. Is that a good representation of your? Yeah. Okay, yeah, so did we, did we give, did we, um, state, uh, an intent to go to PUD as we were going to zone to R1, when we bought it essentially? And the answer is no, because frankly, we didn't know. So when we bought it, we didn't even know we were necessarily doing a PUD. So, and we definitely didn't know this design, we didn't have anything in mind. And so this is, like I said, this is a process. Okay, here's some land, um, what, what, what can happen on this land? And it, and it, it just kind of evolves over the, over the period. So the answer is not, no.
Thank you.
Yes, please. Hey, good questions. So, um, the, in case you didn't hear, are the studies available publicly? And will the recreation and public area of this, uh, PUD be available to, to everyone outside the community? Both good questions. I don't know, are, are the studies public?
Yeah, so once they're final, like sometimes they send, we, we receive draft studies. Uh, but, and draft documents are protected. But once they're final, and it's a final study that's submitted to the county, um, that's a public document unless it contains, um, trade secrets or, or other, um, business information that's requested to be kept protected by the, the person that submitted the record. So, but typically those are public once they're final studies.
I mean, an easy answer is I don't really have anything to hide there. So I don't really mind either way. And the, the second part of your question is, um, it's likely that everything would be open to the public. Um, if it's paid for by, say, an HOA fee, then there might be some type of, um, access fee that's someone that's not paying. But honestly, I don't know. The trail system, certainly, those are open. You know, the equestrian stuff, that'll be open, so. Sorry. Absolutely.
Thank you. In the awesome hat, please, sir. Yes. Awesome hat, not awesome hair, awesome hat. So, thank you. And if I could answer this one, Kelly, I'm gonna make fun of engineers for a second. Uh, what happens on these drainage plans is the engineers sit down and decide what that flood looks like and then they size the culverts accordingly. Once that plan is submitted as part of the development, then the county does hold them accountable to whatever the engineer and whatever that plan was set at. Now, all engineers aren't created equal and I'm not exactly sure what this covert sizing is about. But that's how the process works. You and I both know that if they guess wrong or calculate wrong, they're not gonna be there very long and that the, the culverts will be replaced. But that the county is holding the developers accountable to whatever that drain plan is. Gotcha. Sure. Kelly, I'll let you stand up for yourself.
Whatever, calculations.
Just hear to the mic if you could.
All right, whatever items we produce for, or whoever produces Greg, you know, whoever Greg hires to produce for, for his development. It's all reviewed by county, county staff. They have a hired engineer that's a consultant that reviews it all. So, um, it, it'll have multiple eyes on it, but.
Yeah, no, thank you. Let's share it around a little bit. Now back to the awesome hat.
So we looked at, uh, both our neighbors and we matched the dent, the same size. So we have all one acre minimums along the Crimson side, which is what Crimson has, one acre minimums along our side. So we ma- we matched it exactly. Within the development, yes, but along the border, it's primarily one acre, uh.
Additional questions? Dion, please.
I like you, if that was the.
He's some good chest of flood air gave. Thank you, thank you Dion. Let's go to the back of the room, please. The PUD? So, and, and just to clarify a little bit, um, this project was brought to P&amp;Z in November and they recommended some changes. It was kind of an awkward recommendation. They recommended some changes. They didn't necessarily say no or yes, they recommend some changes. The applicant then came back with what a lot of folks felt like weren't many changes. I think he clarified there were a few. And then now P&amp;Z is recommending, no approval has been made. There hasn't been any, um, uh, formal decision made on whether this can be a PUD or not. It was just recommended from P&amp;Z that they move forward with these recommendations. So these are legislative matters for the most part. And so there really isn't a set criteria for them. It's up to the individ- the seven individual P&amp;Z members to, to vote their conscience. Let's wrap up if we could. Yes, ma'am, please.
Yeah, so the Lost Springs Road, the, the jut out right there. It, it's just an awkward piece of property, honestly. It's not, uh, Greg mentioned that it could be a road in the future, but that would only be if participating, you know, adjacent landowners allowed it to be and the county allowed it to be as well. Right now, it's not presented as a public right away. It's just a, it spurs out there because that's the way the property is. Right, yeah, there's, there were, there's no planned access on Lost Springs Road. Yep. And then ask you, answer questions about, uh, the, the two access. Ryan, sorry, what was your question on the two access points again? Oh, right. Yeah, so there is a county right of way established there. However, conversations with the county and with UDOT preferred that access not be developed because of the spacing that UDOT requires. Um, the, the two additional accesses, the two accesses that are currently there, the, adding the third one was not, uh, UDOT was not, uh, a proponent of that.
Kelly, could I address this? When I asked the same question today and, because I had the same concern that I think you might have. UDOT is very specific about where they want these access points. And this one does not, the one that's drawn on there that I think we all assumed was going to be the main access point, is not their preferred choice. Now, having said that, can county commissioners and private citizens go to UDOT and apply pressure? Sure, I think we can. Um, but yeah, again, that's gonna be up to them. So that's a point that I, I'll take up as well. I, I think we need to address that. But, oh, sorry, I was gonna say, let, let's do two more. Let's do Bunny and Justin's been standing up for a while.
Okay, so I think I am the only one who lives southwest where the water's gonna come. My, it's just us and my neighbor, they're not here. They live up on a hill, but they have an access where the water's gonna come. And I think I might lose my mind, um, if all this water starts coming down the wash. And I'm telling you, you can come to my house, I'll cook you supper and I will show you a lot of things that's out there. And it's a real thing. And Dion's right, he knows what he's talking about. He's, he's done it, he's seen the water. I've seen the water. We are built on high ground and knock on everything. Nothing has happened when other people have flooded because where we live is good and whoever, you know, developed it first knew what they were doing. But I'm telling you, Lost Spring, it floods. And it hasn't flooded so much that I couldn't get out. But I am a freaking awesome driver in the mud and this, I tried to get it off, but I, just getting the gates where Mike Noel has his cows, I mean, it was slicker than fish guts. I'll just say that. And I'm telling you, when they start doing, you can look up in, what is it, Tom's Canyon, those like eight feet dips you have to go through. I'm telling you, what's gonna happen, you can write this down. It's gonna come down to my house and it's gonna come over the road. It's gonna come over Lost Spring. It's gonna go down where my neighbors have their access. It's gonna come down that wash where the other one, and it depends on where the water's coming. I'm telling you, I'm a meteorologist. and it depends on where the water's coming. I'm telling you, I'm a meteorologist when it comes to this. Because you got Lost Spring Wash over here, and you've got the runoff from the north and the east, and it comes, and there's a wash here, and there's a wash here, and holy cow, one time, I literally thought there were cows floating in the wash, but it was a bunch of brush. It was more, I don't even know where that stuff came from. But you look out there, and it was insane. So I'm telling you, all engineers are not created, but I'm telling you.
We, we believe you. Justin, please.
I'll, I'll speak to what I can. So that, that is, that kind of comes as the process works out. So that's not fully flushed out. So that's, that's why I'm a little vague right now, is because the details aren't worked out. However, typically, how they are worked out is in a special services district. So we, so we are, I don't, I don't want to tell you something that doesn't actually happen, but the way I understand it right now is, at, at a minimum, we can supply a warehouse that can have a truck there. And then we work with Kane, or excuse me, Canab City, that has the fire, the fire protection, the fire control, and the employees and all of that. And essentially, we start what's called a special services district that could be housed with the location that we provide, or they might not go to where we're going. That's why it's not in stone yet. But essentially, it gets, it brings fire protection to this area through an agreement with, with what we're doing, and with the county, and with the city. So if we do, if, first of all, if you enjoy the protection, then there would be cost. But if we do, if we do a local district, which is only our area, and then only housed in our area, then that's one thing. I don't think anyone wants that, though. And so I think a special service district, number one, is the natural progression of having fire safety for your home. So, but that's, but to tell you the truth, that gets worked out with your representatives. I mean, that's, that's how that works.
Greg, let me speak to that too, Justin, because you bring up a great point. I think a lot of you know the county has been working on potentially creating a special service district out east of town that could provide fire for everyone in some fashion, whether that's just paying Canab City to come out, or whatever it is. I think what Greg's mentioning is an, an alternative that they could potentially form a special service district just right there in this project. And that's all it would have the ability to assess a fee to. So those of you that are concerned, I don't want to be in this special service district. Potentially, you wouldn't be, unless the county created a larger one. All right, we, we do want to wrap this up, but I don't want to cut anyone off. Is, is there just a question burning a hole in someone's pocket? Red shirt, please. Yeah, thanks. Good question. I, I think, from where I'm sitting, I think the commission needs to take this. This is pretty difficult to send this back to Planning and Zoning. Planning and Zoning has worked through this about as well as they know how. And I think the commission needs to take this and address these recommendations from Planning and Zoning. We have our own concerns. We would like to address. And so I think at this point, we'd probably sit down with the applicant and work through a lot of these concerns, potentially coming up with a little different shaped product, have another town meeting, get some input on what this new version looks like, and then go from there. So I, those, those have not gone by the wayside. Those will be addressed again. Oh, absolutely. And, and to understand their role, their role is to give us recommendations. And so we can take recommendations from you, and from them, take our own, and mold it into a product that that's what we would eventually, as a county commission, vote on. Okay, please. Absolutely, thank you. And we are, we are addressing that. We have talked about it several times. But here, here's my recommendation. We really do appreciate all the input we've received. We appreciate the applicant coming and sharing with us and answering some questions. I would recommend, those that wish to stay, why don't we, I'm, I'm gonna give Greg and Kelly the assignment to go back and stand by the maps. Those that have questions and would like to speak with them, let's go back there. But I would suggest that we adjourn the meeting, if I could get a motion.
Chair, I move to adjourn.
Okay, it's been moved that we adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all for coming, very much.
You're heroes. You're athletes, champions.